Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. If you would all please rise. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in honor of the victims down in Florida. And if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Wilmington School Committee meeting on February 14th. We'll start our business for the evening with our items for approval. We'll start with approval of minutes January 24th, 2018, and January 31st, 2018, regular session. Do I have a motion? MJ, do I have a second? Tom? All those in favor? It's passed unanimously. Approval of the Wilmington Educational Foundation grant for the 2018 STEM Fair in the amount of $1,500. Do I have a motion? MJ, and a second. Thank you, Jen. All those in favor? All right. And we'll seek approval of warrants G-417, R-219, R-220, R-221, L-36, L-37, L-38, L-39, L-40, FS-20, FS-21, FS-22, FS-23. Do I have a motion? Jen, second. Manny, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Seeking approval of warrants payroll, January 31st, 2018. Do I have a motion? Manny, a second from Tom. All those in favor? That is six in favor with one abstention. Is that right, Peggy? All right. And warrant CB-08. I have a motion. Peggy, second from Jen. All those in favor? That's five in favor, two abstentions, being myself and Mrs. Burns. And warrants sped 18 and sped 19. Motion? Tom, and a second by Jen. All those in favor? There's again, five in favor, two abstentions, being again, myself and Mrs. Burns. Yeah. So we also now will move on to our report from our student representative. Good evening. How are you?
Very good, thank you. How are you?
Well, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. Last time I reported to the school committee meeting, we had a leadership conference that we were going to later in that week at LaSalle College. I'm very happy to report that it went very well for Wilmington students, and we brought back, or brought back, excuse me, a lot of valuable information. A new committee was formed at WHS called the WHS Visionary Committee, and our mission basically is to create puzzle pieces that'll go all around the school, all clubs, chapters, classes. Teachers will create their own puzzle piece, which can all be put together to see who WHS is and what we are, and basically to highlight all of the positive aspects of Wilmington High School. At lunches this week, Teddy grams were sold. Students and teachers could buy and send them to anybody they want, and all of the profits from those sales will be distributed by Local Heroes Club, run by Mrs. Martell, to veterans overseas and in Massachusetts, both retired and active. Today's strings attached went to the intermediate schools, grades four and five, for the Arch of Bows. It is a tradition every year that the high school kids make an arch of bows with, for all the younger kids to walk under, basically as a rite of passage in graduation to middle school strings attached and their journey through the rest of the Strings Attached program. The Science Department, over the past couple of weeks, has been going to the middle schools and intermediate schools for physics presentations. It is an opportunity, a great opportunity, for those kids in the middle school and intermediate schools to learn from high school students that are in physics classes about pretty much anything, from gravity to inertia and how it works and how it, the implications that it has on the way things work in the world. And they had the opportunity to ask them any questions. And lastly, I have Ms. Cassin and the Mentor Program selling WHS Unity apparel. It is a, like sweatshirts, pullovers, that anybody can buy, and those proceeds will be going to the Special Olympics that will be held late April and early March.
Standing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions, comments from the membership? As usual, it was a very, very well-done report, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone. You, too.
Thanks for coming.
All right. We have, one of our members is, needs to leave the meeting a bit early, so I'm going to take one of the items out of order. Our superintendent report. Just start by saying that we had the pleasure of interviewing four candidates over the last couple of days. I want to thank, and we've done this certainly publicly before, but I want to thank our selection screening committee for their outstanding work. We had great candidates to meet with and to interview. Seeing as next week is school vacation, and there are several members that are going to be traveling over the next few weeks, I would, and furthermore, several of these candidates are in high demand, and there are 50 openings for superintendencies in Massachusetts. I think it'd be appropriate if the board agrees to enter into deliberation and at least discuss the candidates. And I would entertain a motion from someone on the board through, go ahead and do that.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Tom? All right. All those in favor?
Could we have discussion?
Yes, indeed.
Since I raised the issue, I'm going to bring it up. I appreciate the urgency, and I understand that we have the challenge of vacations ahead of us. I am certainly willing with, to move forward with some deliberation and start some discussions, but I am not comfortable voting this evening. We were given a packet of survey responses, and I just received this tonight, so I have not had a chance to review it. And I think if we're going to do a survey, then we ought to respect the folks that took the time to respond to the survey and actually review it. Just my opinion.
I appreciate that. All right. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Can we have, is there a further discussion? Oh, okay. Can we have a vote? Who would, the motion is that we enter into deliberation discussions. All those in favor? All right. That's six one. All those opposed? Julie's opposed. All right. That being said, I will say that, yes, there's 200 pages of survey. I did, I did go through the whole thing. I did a quick tally of the responses, who was in favor, who was opposed, and I will say that, from my perspective, the survey really reinforced my opinion. I think there was one candidate that stood out, and I would, at this time, I would certainly seek discussion, but I think that Dr. Glenn Brand has the experience. He's got the wherewithal. He's, was wonderful during the visit. I had a chance to interact with him during lunch. I know the staff had a chance to interact with him all day. I've received feedback from a number of people within the staff, all, almost unanimously in favor of Dr. Brand. I would also say that the survey backed that up by a, by a margin of two to one to the next closest candidate. So I would say that, in my opinion, I'm in favor of Dr. Brand, but I would like to hear further discussion. Yes, Peggy?
I know we're in a conundrum here right now because of time and Julie's feelings, and I feel the same way as Julie on one level. But on another level, since this has started, I have been approached by numerous people, and in fact, today at the library, I was approached by a grandfather of four children in the system, who said, every single one of them has said to me, including teachers, some younger students, they have said to me that they were just, he was, sorry, Dr. Brand did a fabulous job. He seemed like a wonderful fit for us. They hoped that we, that I would think carefully about Dr. Brand. And then I got a phone call that made me nervous, and that he is a finalist in a number of places, and another one is supposed to be coming out today. And one of them is definitely, it was in the newspaper, that he's going to be selected or told about it, I guess, on March 26th, at which time I believe we're not going to have our chairperson available, because you're going to be away. Next week, we're not going to have other people available, because they're going to be away. And I think-
February, February 20.
I mean, February, I'm sorry. But for me, I think we have to be careful to lose sight of the whole, to lose sight of the, what we need, because for whatever reasons we have, I feel strongly that we really have to scoop him up, if that's who we want. And if it's not who we want, or we have a division among us over the candidate, that's a whole different story to me than about doing the timing.
That's a great point. MJ?
I have to concur with both of your feelings. I, because I'm not one to rush things, and I don't like the pressure of this, but I feel very, after seeing the interviews, I feel very comfortable with my feelings that I think Dr. Brand is the ideal candidate, and I see a lot of similarities and a lot of familiarities to me in his presence and his articulation, in the points that he covered that weren't directly questioned of him last night. It's apparent to me that he does have a strong command of all areas and all corners of a district, especially and most importantly, learning within our district, and, and the social-emotional piece. Just thinking, I was up till midnight last night, because I couldn't turn the brain off. There's a lot of similarities to, that I find, as in my perspective, to Joanne Benton, in the way he approaches his, just approach the questions that we asked of him. He has a calmness about him, but, but yet, an assertiveness and leadership quality, and a comfort piece. He's very comfortable with the questions we asked, even if, and I think, I must have a couple of ringers to make one think, I thought he approached them very thoughtfully, and I really, I really feel very confident in, in that I would be comforted in voting tonight, if that's the will of the board, without, without questioning, without reservation with scene, without district visits, so, just not like me, so.
I thought we had some really strong candidates, and, you know, there's a couple in particular that I felt were strong, and I wanted to thank the, the committee that, that, not-
Screening committee?
The screening committee. I thought they did a good job sending us some, some really good candidates. I think it's important for us to all be on the same page on voting, and hopefully we can do that. I do think that, I don't want to hurry the vote. I also don't want to wait if we have the right candidate, but I think we need to deliberate and discuss, and I think Mrs. Bressard needs the opportunity to speak her mind and any, you know, what her thoughts are. And I would feel better voting on this if we were all on the same page, and if we take our time in discussing this as long as we have to tonight, and then if we all feel that we're in the position to vote, we should vote and make that decision. But I would feel better as a group, as a school committee, if we all were on the same page moving forward. With that being said, I want to make sure that we're not losing the opportunity to grab the best individual that we have available. So with that being said, I just want to keep the dialogue going before I really get more specific on my feeling and on the candidates. So I just want to make sure that we get to all speak, and we all get to deliberate in our concerns, and everything that, that we need to say before we take this to a vote. So this is the opportunity for us to do this, and hopefully we, we can have a good dialogue before we went on to vote.
Further discussion? Julie?
I'd just like to, thank you, Mr. Mullis. I think that this is a very difficult decision. We did have four good candidates put forward. I am just asking for a little time to pull my thoughts together. Again, I did not see the results of the survey until just now, when they were put in front of me, and I have not had a chance to read them. I just would like the opportunity to think about it a little bit. I am certainly willing to hear what people say, but I'm already hearing a majority. And maybe Dr. Brand is the person that I'm interested in the most, too, but I haven't had a chance to vet him myself. We never discussed or took a vote, per se, about whether we were going to visit the candidates' districts. We shared some convers, we shared some thoughts, but we never took it to a vote. So is that something that we might do or not do? I, I'm just feeling a lot of pressure to make a decision right here, right now. I've been in this position before, and I didn't appreciate it. And I've heard from my colleagues that they didn't appreciate being pushed either. So, it's my feeling. Has nothing to do with the candidates themselves, it's the process that I'm struggling with. And I just want to be on record saying that.
I certainly appreciate that. I think we, we all respect that. Any further discussion? Jen?
So, and I, I've had longer in this process, because I was a part of that screening committee, so it's, I think I'm in a little bit of a different position, probably, with, with Mrs. Kane, and just, we've seen sort of this progression. Dr. Brand is definitely my, my number-one choice, probably my only choice. I think that he clearly meets our candidate profile, the change leadership, communication, operation management. I did have a chance to go through the surveys, and I agree that it's important that we read through them and feel comfortable with them. Dr. Brand was in the lead by quite a bit among the community, which included teachers, parents, other residents, central law, and whoever filled it out, we don't know specifically, but I think that they, they've spoken, and that this is clear, and there were a couple of comments in here about, oh my goodness, I hope we don't lose this candidate, because we do know that he's, he's a finalist in one or two other searches that could potentially move faster than we could. And I think I came into tonight thinking to myself, if we were stuck between, there were just two that were so close, and we were like, oh my goodness, it's so close, then to talk about doing those next steps and doing some, some visits might make sense to help us differentiate. But for me, as, the way I stand is, he's clearly so strong that I don't feel the need to, I'm not comparing him to anyone anymore. For me, he's, he's the one that I, that I would vote for if, if that were to happen tonight. So, and I, I am concerned about time, I guess, as far as, but that's not why I'm voting quickly or tonight. I think that he meets the candidate profile as we have drawn up, as the community has spoken to us about what they're looking for. We put out the survey. We had a decent response. I mean, it's over 200 pages of responses, and it's not 200 responses, but 200 pages of responses, and people have clearly said, this is, this is who we want. So I think pending additional maybe reference checks and those sorts of things, I mean, I feel as though I would be comfortable voting this evening.
Tom?
I can kind of understand what Julie's going through. I went through a similar thing when it came to the selecting of the interim superintendent. And, you know, I didn't know anything about Joanne Benton. Never met her, never had to ask her questions, but the board decided that that was the decision, and I voted the way I voted, and voted the way you did, and that was the way it was. And, yeah, it worked out great. I mean, you know, she was, you know, great for the short time that she was here. You know, I'm very much in favor of Dr. Brand. I think he definitely is far above everybody else in that decision, and I would hate to miss out on that opportunity to have him here.
Peggy?
I would say, I did get to read these this afternoon, and it did take hours, I will tell you that. But the interesting part was, you could almost take the first two of all four candidates, and then go through the packet, and they said the same thing. There wasn't anything new revealed as you got further into the packet, that people were just honed in on how they saw a match. And I think a good thing was, I really appreciated the way people answered this survey, and the fact that they weren't nasty, that they weren't, why would you bring someone like that type, type of thing. This is an interesting candidate. They, I think they were much more positive during this process, which I think is wonderful. The other part about this is, people were coming to me yesterday, it was, it blew my mind in a sense, telling me how much they liked him, but they hadn't seen him. And I said to a few of them, I don't understand, how do you know anything about him? What do you know? And just from reading his application, or what little at that point we had given out, they thought, he is like the answer to all these little issues that we have. He's a, an acting superintendent. He's the only one out of the group who actually had been a superintendent for any length of time, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to send him to the superintendent camp. We save some money right there. I hope I don't see Kristi McGrath, she'll yell at me. Sorry. So, so we wouldn't have to train, sort of train the person into what we like, would like to see done the right way. It's already basically been done for us in his experience. People, because of, I just, the way he presents himself, he presents himself in a way that he's equal to us, but he knows more than we do in some ways, that's how I felt as a former teacher, that he really had a nice way of presenting, oh, that's good, and putting us on an equal level, and then all, he could add something to it or not, but he had a lot to say. And the teachers were very enthused about his candidacy, so that says something to me. I, you all know this, I've always said for quite a while, I don't think we listen to our teachers enough. I think they know the answer to a lot of things we don't know, and we've got to give them the credit to listen to it, and I think we're getting that, we're moving towards that. So somebody who'll come along and do that, to me, is a really favored candidate. And when you go back and look at all the four candidates, every one of them, that's why I loved this committee, the committee when we did this, every one of them had something to give to Wilmington. If we ended up with any one of these, basically, there is something in there that they could share with us and help us to be a better community. But by far, he had the most. And I don't want to go through, I'm telling you, I'm being selfish, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Julie. I don't want to go through this again. And I, we worked very hard, the committee worked very hard, and there's no discussion as to whether he's fit or not as a candidate. So that's why I just think, we have to do this tonight. I'm an advocate of doing this tonight. And that's why I'm thinking of that.
Yeah. You touched on a point that I'd just like to, to echo. We did have great candidates. It's, although we seem to be almost unanimous, if not consensus, that Dr. Brand is who we believe is the right fit for Wilmington. Certainly our other candidates were, were wonderful, too. If you're watching, we certainly appreciated your time, and we, we have the utmost respect for all of you. And you, and you all did very, very well during the visits and during the, during the interviews, and that, that certainly should be acknowledged. Manny, do you have a name?
Yeah. I just, I want to go back and, so I, I hear what Mrs. Bressard's saying, I want to be sensitive to her concerns, and I was involved in the superintendent search three years ago, and last, two years ago, and this is counting the interim one, this is my third superintendent search. You have school committee members that go years and never do one. This is my third one, so it's, it's a lot of work. We put a lot of time into it. And I, I remember being in the same shoes that Mrs. Bressard was in. I also felt that there was some pressure being put on us to go one way or another. I didn't think it was fair. But I have to tell you, I, I don't feel that way right now. And the reason why I don't feel that way right now is, is I, I took a look at the surveys today, and I read them, and I went through them, and then I looked at this, and everything that was on the survey was everything that, you know, I felt, and from going through the interview process. And the reality is, I, I will look at the surveys as, as, you know, a guide, but I wouldn't take, you know, I wouldn't necessarily take what's being said and what's being surveyed as, as my decision. It just happens to be what the, the members that filled out the survey kind of agree with my thoughts as well. And I am in the thought that, I'm thinking that, from everything that we saw in the candidates that we interviewed, and they, they all did great jobs, and they all were, like Peggy says, any of them can, can come in and, and take that position and do well, but I, I really, I feel that Dr. Brand certainly has the experience. He's a classroom teacher, he's a principal, he is a superintendent. Everything that we talked about, when we were talking about what kind of qualities we're looking for a superintendent, he has. He was thoughtful in every answer that he gave in the interview. He thought about it. He was knowledgeable. He was passionate about everything that he talked about. And one of the things that he said to, at the end of his interview, that really, I think made a big difference, is he was very clear of his commitment. He was committed on the long term. And I hope that he meant what he said, because that's what I'm going by. And we need someone that is committed, that's going to stay for the long term, and, because nobody wants to be doing this again. We really don't. And so I, I feel comfortable, and I, I have to tell, Mrs. Bressard, I, I, I'm sensitive to your concerns, and I would, you know, I agree with you, and, and I want you to vote your conscience, and I want you to do what you, you know, has to be done. But personally, my opinion is that, above and beyond all of them, Glenn Brand is who I would select, and if there's an opportunity to grab him before somebody else does, I'm inclined to do so.
Yeah. I think it's important to, to note that what you're, what you and Peggy are saying, and certainly what I'm saying, is we are looking to do this quickly, because we don't want to lose him, as opposed to, we don't want to do this search again. That's very true, but that's not why we're moving quickly on this. It's because we believe he's the right fit. Is that, I don't, I, I guess I am speaking for you, but I want to make sure I'm not speaking in the correct.
I think that he is the best candidate of the group that we, that we interviewed, and if we have the opportunity to select him and get him, I, I'd say, let's, let's do it. And if there's a, if there's concerns that he may not be there, because we're taking too much time, I think that would be a loss for us.
I just think a caliber of his professionalism is not, does not come around. There's a, you know, we know that there is a barrage from this search, as well as the previous search of new superintendents. I think experience will bode, is what we need. On top of that, I think that's the ultimate caveat. Again, although I, I know this, we're moving quickly, I, I find myself to be very, by nature, very cautious. I don't have reservations, and I know that, whatever it be, I can defend my position in that sense. But that's my biggest concern, is that, is that the caliber of individual that Dr. Brand, Brand represents, and what he could offer to this district, is far and few between in, in the number of districts who are looking for superintendents with a similar profile that we require.
All right. We actually, in about a minute and a half, we are required by law to go into our budget hearing, because it's a public hearing. I've heard a lot of discussion. What I think is appropriate now, rather than ask the committee to rush their vote, is I'll ask for a motion on whether we are ready to vote, or whether we want to continue discussion after the budget hearing. Anybody willing to make such a motion? MJ, your motion? To vote?
To vote, as to whether or not we'll make a final decision?
Yep. And if I have a second, I'll certainly ask for a little bit more discussion from Julie. Second? Tom? All right. Julie, would you like to say anything further?
Again, I just want to go on record as saying that I am feeling pressure. I didn't like feeling pressure in past searches. I totally appreciate the urgency and where we're at. Just would have appreciated a little bit more time. It's not about- It's not about the candidates. I happen to like Dr. Brand. And whether I abstain or do anything else with my vote this evening, it doesn't matter because we have a majority anyway, I'm hearing. So I'm just going on record to say that.
Appreciate that. Do you want to discuss it more after we go through the budget?
I'm set.
Well, I was going to say, is there, do you have a suggested solu, like, is there another, my, my solution would be to take more time, but that's clearly, we don't have the luxury of time, and I appreciate that, so.
All right, so I have a, a motion with a second to, to vote. Do we have, can we vote on taking a vote? Everybody who's ready to take a vote? All right, that is, okay, that's unanimous. All right. Do I have a motion to appoint Dr. Brand pending successful negotiations? So moved by Manny, second by Tom. And is there any discussion, very, very quickly? All right, all those in favor? That is unanimous? That's unanimous, Tristan? Thank you very much. And again, I'll just say very quickly, we, I think everybody here certainly respects your opinion, your position, Julie, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Now 7:30, we are going into our public hearing for budget. I actually have some, there's some language I'm supposed to use here. Yeah, okay. All right. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38N, we will recess this meeting in order to conduct the annual public hearing on the proposed FY 2019 School Department operating budget. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the regular meeting will reconvene with the agenda item, Budget Hearing. As a matter of protocol, Interim Superintendent Ruggiero will present the recommended budget, and the school committee will then entertain any questions or comments from the public on the recommended budget. The school committee will pick up its own discussion of the FY 2019 budget in the regular meeting. So if there are no further questions or comments, I will close the public hearing. Oh, no, that's, that'll, that'll happen after. I'm skipping ahead. So we are now in public hearing.
Thank you. What I'm going to present is interim superintendent's recommended FY 19. But first, I'd like to thank the members of the administration who are coming out tonight on the third day in a row from many of them, and I appreciate it. Wilmington Public Schools remains committed to our mission to provide a challenging, relevant, personalized educational experience for us students. As I went over in December, our personnel changes, nothing has changed from December till now. We started the FY 18 budget with 471.9 FTEs. Included in this budget, we had some enrollment reductions of 2.0 FTEs, special ed, special education compliance, additional teachers of 3.4, new program that we instituted, increase of one FTE. Some teachers, other cleanup FTE related, no real head count, if you will, but FTEs in the budget of a reduction of 0.3. Educational assistance, we added 2.5 related to compliance, another 2.0, that's new program that we implemented, and some educational assistance reductions of 2.25. So this budget reflects a 4.35% FTE increase in the FY 19 budgets, 476.25 FTEs. Salary changes, from December until now, there were some changes in, in late January. As you remember the process we went through, we presented a preliminary budget in December. Mr. Antonelli and I met with the town manager, town accountant, assistant town manager, and came up with some numbers. So what's reflected in here is no changes, other than we put some, we were made aware of some retirements, so the difference between a retiree's salary and a replacement and so forth. So our FY 18 budget, salary budget was 30.6 million. Salary, I mean, step and lane changes, increase of 428,000. The new positions, which I spoke to earlier, 376,000. Salary increases incorporated in the budget, 928,000. Replacements, as employees or staff leave, move on and so forth, we replace them, savings of about 382,000. Some reductions of staffing in various places for 347,000 in longevity for a little over 19. So the salary increase is 1,022,656, bringing our FY 19 salary budget to 31,664,458, or 3.34% over our FY 18 budget. On the non-salary side, it's a little bit different than what I presented in December. We did show you at the end of January the changes. Nothing that we did impacted any of the programs or processes or anything that we had talked about in December. Our FY 18 budget for non-salary was about 8.2 million. Included in this budget is some increases in special education tuitions, transportation, and other special ed-related services of 363,000. We added textbooks, 53,000.
Sorry, Dan Turp. I know, not to jump the gun, but regards to what's occurring at the state level with budgetary needs and our governor's supplemental budget with circuit breaker, which is that right now is a proposed $36 million loss in that funding right now, how would that impact this area of the budget as you've proposed?
As, I think I've mentioned before, we're very conservative in budgeting, our circuit breaker reimbursement, that's reimbursement for the state, from the state where we can charge some special intuitions against it. We are able to carry over from one year to the next year, funds that we receive, so we've been very conservative. I have not increased the circuit breaker offset in this budget. We've kept it the same as it's been the last couple of years, so I'm not, not increasing that offset, if you will, to help us in this budget. I kept it flat and very confident that we're okay. Now, obviously, if it went away, not only would Wilmington, but every district in the Commonwealth would be in some serious trouble.
Thank you very much.
Textbooks, 53,000. Included in that is about 12,000 for Reader's Workshop, libraries throughout many of the schools, as well as some other money if we think we need textbooks in certain areas. Electricity, we bumped up by about 37,000, primarily this is at the high school, as I mentioned before. The more any energy-efficient building you have, the more expensive it's sometimes to run. Transportation is up about 26, a little over 26,000. As you're aware, we just signed a contract with North Reading Transportation for at least three years with possibly, depending on town meeting, the ability to exercise a couple of option years. We feel we have very, very good rates from them for the next three years, so that's great. School and office supplies are up about a little over 8,000. Maintenance repairs, we reduced it almost 11,000. Really, we had some money for carpet replacements last year, or in this year FY 18, that we don't need in FY 19. Instructional technology, we moved a project to revolving funds, and we have funds to cover that, so that helped our operating budget, but it's reflected in our revolving accounts, and then some minor changes, other little things, so. Our non-salarious changes, we had an increase of about $434,000, bringing our FY 19 budget to 8,662,075, or a 5.29% increase. So in total, when we look at budget in FY 18, and I'll just look at the bottom line, we had a $38,868,945 budget. FY 19, $40,326,533, or a $1,457,558 increase of 3.75. Again, I think we're very confident and comfortable with this budget, and we really appreciate the collaboration that we have with the town, and how we work together in kind of one community. So we're very, very happy with, with this budget. And as I said, nothing, no programs or anything that we had talked about in December that we've implemented have been impacted by any changes we had to make from December to now. On the capital side, we have in our budget $451,000, made up of a voice-over internet telephone system project of 50,000. If you remember, we initially were going to move this out to a future year. Kind of last minute, the town came back to us and said, and said, "You don't have to move it, you can, you have that money in FY 19," so we put it down. A middle school laptop replacement project, a little over 161,000. Elementary projector replacement project for 135, new handicap minivan for 55, and a new data center in the district of 50,000. So that's our capital plan. Before I get, just to mention some of the key components, the operating budget and the capital plan were all incorporated into town manager's budget message that was given two, a couple Mondays ago. So it's all incorporated into his budget planning. So some of the key components, not all, but some of them in our FY 19 budget, we talked about the investigation and science program at the middle school, clocking the units of study for writing. We have Reader's Workshop, we're going to add Writer's Work, Writing Workshop, if you will. I Ready at the Middle School for benchmarks and individual lessons. Funding textbook purchases, as I mentioned a little bit earlier. Expanding our Chromebook initiative to include grades seven through 11. Again, in the, in the budget, as we discussed, we've addressed increasing special education costs. We continue to serve as a sheltered English emergence training site for our staff, as well as surrounding districts. As I mentioned last, I think in December, about 70% of our teachers, core academic teachers are SEI endorsed. The goal is to reach 100% in the next couple of years. New hires of core academic positions will need to be endorsed as they, they are hired. So we're very, very happy with that. We were able to offer those at very reduced or no cost to the district and so forth. Sue McDonald, one of our, our ELL teachers, is running that. Meeting all contractual requirements, utilities, collective bargaining units, transportation, as I mentioned, as well as all legal mandates. And included in here are some middle school, school supplies, as Superintendent Benton had added last year. Also, although not in this slide, we do have about $12,000 that we'd be in lack for performing on, so I think that, that's, that's great, so. So in conclusion, and forgive me, because I'll kind of read this if you don't mind, but, "We believe our most important duties are to equip students with those skills necessary for college in the workforce, to establish a strong foundation for future academic and socio-emotional growth, and to support the evolution of the total child throughout his or her entire school career. There is no more important investment in our future than our students today. Our FY 19 recommended budget supports these beliefs." As I mentioned earlier, I'd like to thank the town of Wilmington, town manager Jeff Hollins, staff, members of the Board of Selectmen, finance committee, and the community at large for their ongoing support of the Wilmington Public School, as well as the school committee for the support of me, the staff, in this budget, so, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We would now open it up to public comments. Seeing none? If there are no further questions or comments, I will close the public hearing and return the committee to the regular meeting. So we are now back in regular session, and I would take questions, comments from the membership. Anybody want to start us off?
Excuse me?
Yes, Peggy?
I'll just say, thank you for the books.
I appreciate, the students will appreciate books.
Anything further?
I just want to thank Paul and Frank for their diligence. And Jackie, forgive me, no, I meant to, I've been, I've been trying to ruminate.
I'm filing for a sign.
I know you are, though.
No, I know you are, and forgive me, for all the hard work in besting a healthy budget that promotes learning and social, emotional support. And especially, Frank, you're important with regards to going back and negotiating the transportation contract, which will benefit the district financially over a longer period of time. I thank you very much for that advocacy on our behalf and in your role. So it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. It wasn't just me.
I know, and forgive me, not to.
All three of us.
I don't mean to minimize anybody's, forgive me, I don't mean to minimize anyone's participation. I know all the effort, time, and energy that goes into this creation and the timeframe in which it gets created, and I, I thank you very much. Thank you.
I would like to thank just Jackie.
Just Jackie.
Actually, before I speak, is there any, anything further from anyone? Jen?
I also wanted to thank the administrators, the leadership team, for pulling together their needs in their particular schools, and I'm so excited to see the addition of the Writing Workshop. I think that that is the next big move for us, and I'm really happy to see, and I hope that there's some professional development rolled into, into that. I'm sure, I know there is, I know there is, so I'm very excited. I think that Reading Workshop has been a huge undertaking, and people have been working really hard, and I think this is the time, so I'm really happy that it's in, it's in this budget. So thank you, everybody, for all of your hard work. It's deeply appreciated.
Well, I will echo my committee members' sentiments, and you actually hit on something I was going to mention. I've been, I'm a big fan of the Reader's Workshop, so I was very excited to see Writer's Workshop coming in. Once again, our team has put together a fantastic budget that's going to cover all of our needs and keep us, keeps going healthfully, which is not always the case in every, every district. So thank you to everyone who participated in this, in this process, and thank you, Paul and Frank, and, your name again? Jackie? Thank you, everyone, very, very much. Thank you, Paul. All right, we'll move on to our next order of business is...
To vote, to accept it?
Of course we have to vote on the budget. Can we skip that? Just make an assumption?
Okay.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the FY 19 budget as proposed.
So moved?
So moved. Second with Jen. All right, all those in favor? All right, it's official, Tristan. Thank you for prompting me on that. Skip right over that important aspect. All right, our next order of business is, and I won't forget a vote on this, we're looking to seek approval for the 2018-2019 school year calendar. Are there any questions, comments from the board regarding the calendars you see in your packet?
I'd like to just make one comment, draw your attention to one item. Christmas in December of '18 is on a Tuesday. What I included in this is actually a half-day early dismissal on the Friday before. Rather than bringing everyone back for half-day on the Monday before Christmas, I think it's probably wise to have that as a no-school day and then the rest of that week and so forth. Similar to a calendar that I think we had in 1314 of 1415. So I just want to bring your attention to that.
All right. That, that being noted, any questions, comments? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve or disapprove, certainly. Peggy, your motion is to approve? And all those, second? From Jen, all those in favor? That is unanimous with the remaining members. Mrs. Burns had to excuse herself. All right, our next order of business is textbook, textbook inventory. I believe we're, yes, Peggy?
Can I have this put on to the next meeting?
Oh, certainly.
I do think that...
You know, you can make that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move this particular topic to the next meeting.
Want to table it, want to keep Sean in suspense?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second?
I'm doing you a favor.
Tom? All right. All those in favor?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Gallagher didn't sleep for a week putting this together.
You know what? All right. We have...
They have the MCAS presentation.
All right, we have, we have a motion and a second, and there's been a request for discussion. Julie?
Just curious, why?
Because I didn't even see... Because I didn't need to see it was in here.
Ah, okay.
I admit, I didn't, it's not Mr. Gallagher. I just had said to him, where, where did it go? It just went right there.
It's been a very busy week.
Ever.
It's been a busy, busy week Peggy.
It's been too much this week.
And actually, for more than a couple of weeks with you, you were on the selection committee, so that certainly will happen.
So I appreciate you thinking about this.
All right, in that case, we will take that vote. All those in favor of tabling? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, and we covered the superintendent's search. We did the school calendar. Why do we have that on here twice? FY 19, of the budget, yeah, we did that. All right, public comment? All right, so we are now at public comments. Do we have any, anyone wishing to comment on the agenda items? All right, seeing none. Move on to subcommittee reports. Yes, Manny?
I have one on behalf of MJ that I'd like to read. It's from the Wilmington Education Foundation. Educator exploration grants are due this Friday. Curriculum grant applications were sent out and due on March 16. All applications can be downloaded online. Our spring fundraiser has been chosen. Light to lip sync like a rock star by yourself with a group. WEF lip sync battle will be held Friday, April 27, at the Wilmington-Tuxbury Elks. Registration and further information will be on our website shortly. Thanks, Donna. I don't need to read that. That's it.
Any, any others? Yes, Julie?
I was just going to make note for a future agenda item. Can I do that under?
Certainly.
Subcommittee reports. And Mrs. Keane, a couple of months ago, had asked or suggested that we bring MASC in or a similar organization to do a little bit of a workshop with us around governance. And that seems to have kind of got lost in the shuffle with everything else that we had going on. So I just don't want us to forget about that, and it might be helpful if we do it before our hopeful new superintendent comes on board, so we make sure that we're in good shape before that person comes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll still go, I'll still give you a ride home.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a quick question. When is the expectation of a new superintendent to get started?
So here's what I was going to do under subcommittee reports, is our next step, obviously, is we need to name a subcommittee for negotiating with Dr. Brand. We generally, in this case, will have two school committee members. Do I have, do I have any volunteers to jump on that? Jen? And Peggy, you'd like to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to do it, I'll step aside.
Oh, sorry.
No, no.
Can we have three of us?
Well, we could have three. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that. All right, yeah, because I would, I would have some interest, but I don't want to take it away from anybody else. So why don't we, why don't we make a subcommittee of threes? You've been on the board the longest, is that, is...
It's been three, because then already a lot, not people know on the committee, it's been three in the best.
Okay, all right. So why don't we do that? Why don't we have a three-person subcommittee, Tristan, if you'll note that? Jen, myself and Peggy?
I have a question before we go on.
Yes.
Are we going to be told, what do we, I have hundreds of papers from the superintendent's search. Are we going to be told what to do with them or how to dispose of them so that they maintain their confidentiality?
The town has a shredding day?
Yeah. I'll call you, Steve.
Actually, that's a great question. Is there confidential involved? Yes, you?
I just asked Mr. Storlazey about this actually, about maybe returning, because we have huge stacks of those confidential pieces, returning them to him, his office, and then they will await to be shredded there. We could do that, or I could ask Nezdeck if they would reach, take them all back, and then they would dispose of them. So I can do either.
I can do it, but if you don't mind, I'm going to have the, our B and M come and get them.
Okay.
When I've got them ready. I'll never get them back.
Make sure they're sealed off, with one of those wax stamps.
Yes, okay. Thank you. And can I assume that tonight you, you either call or somebody calls and gives the invitation to the new?
To Dr. Brand, yeah.
Brand, Dr. Brand.
We'll certainly do that.
I guarantee it's already out.
Well, I know, the idea was hopefully, but here's...
Oh, it's already out, probably.
It's already out. I sent a message to Nezdeck just to let, so that hopefully it would get to the candidates prior to them seeing it on social media, although they may be watching.
Here's the other thing. I was just going to say, Dr. Brand had mentioned that he's been watching a school committee meeting, so Dr. Brand, hello.
Welcome.
We certainly, we're looking forward to seeing you again.
Paul's.
Oh, he's calling me now.
He's giving you a run for his, Steve, the comedy license here.
So, yeah, we will take, we'll certainly take care of that, and we'll certainly want to contact the other candidates, and thank them very, very much. Anything further in the subcommittee? Yes, Jen?
I don't know if Mr. Gallagher wants to do an update on the homework committee. We are not going to meet tomorrow night.
That's right. So the veteran administrator that I am, I decided it was in the best interest of all of us to postpone that homework committee meeting, because everyone has been out for a lot of nights, so we're going to reschedule and when we come back from the vacation and pick that back up.
And we're working on the surveys.
Yes, we sent out, yes, the faculty.
And then our student and parent surveys, we were kind of waiting through the superintendent
process, and then we'll be sending those out to families. Then compile the survey data, go back and take a look at our policies, and see if we're going to revise and make a well-informed decision.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. That is all. Move on to correspondence. MJ, do we have correspondence?
No.
Nope, okay.
I guess we're looping up.
All right, our future meeting dates are February 28 and March 14, which leaves our last item of business would be adjournment, if I would have such a motion. Julie?
I'll have that motion.
And a second by Tom. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much for attending. Thank you. I see so many people in the audience that really participated in the whole process of seeking a new superintendent. Thank you all for the time you've spent.